I call this the August 19th, 2025 meeting of Lincoln County Board of Commissioners to order. Our invocation tonight will be given by the Reverend Seth Fieldbrick. Seth is a pastor at the Federal ARP Church. And our pledge allegiance tonight will be given by Anakin Cornwell. Anakin is a seventh grader at the Federal Middle School. He attends Federal Associate Reform Presbyterian Church, where he's a member of the junior senior youth group. He enjoys playing Nintendo Switch, and he's the son of Shannon Bartlett Cornwell. Please stand for the invocation and a pledge.
Evening. Let us pray. Almighty God and Heavenly Father, we praise you, for you are good, and your steadfast love endures forever. Father, I pray for this meeting and everyone involved. Be with Mayor Newman as he leads, and with the Commissioners as they do the work of this county. Be merciful and grant your wisdom to the men and women of the Commission. Guide them by your Spirit according to your perfect and pleasing will. Lord, you have sovereignly placed each person in this room in their places of authority for your glory and the good of your people. Guide them in your truth so that they may do your will. And we will be faithful to give you all the praise. In Christ's precious name I pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Thank you Seth and thank you Anakin. Madam Clerk, if you will, call the roll.
Brenton Coley, David Sanders, Danny Walker, Ben Brown, Bonnie Colwell, Terry Lynn Rogers, Jack Ashley, Kate Guin, Mark Mitchell, Charles Hunter, Mary Ann Tackett, Steve Spray, Daniel Eldridge, Jason Nix, Anthony Taylor, Doug Cunningham, Pat Haynes, Tori Young, Ricky Bryant, Glenn Douglas, Steve Guntherberg, Troy Frazren, Jason Hamrick, Jenny Rolls Walter. Have 21 Commissioners present, three absent.
Okay. Under announcements, we brought up last month about the possibility of changing the September Commission meeting. The 16th is a regular scheduled day. That's a day during Fair Week. It was requested last week that we look about changing it. It's also the night of the meeting in Lewisburg of Charlie Curtis for Commissioners at that same night. So I would need a motion from the floor if we want to change it. That next Tuesday would be the 23rd if we want to change it to that date. Okay, Commissioner Douglas makes a motion for a move to the 23rd. Do I have a second? Commissioner Guntherberg, seconds. Any questions, comments? All in favor of that move, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Thank you. There were nine monthly meeting minutes in your packet and seven quarterly in there that you should have received. Our first item is our consideration for approval to appoint James Jim Hammond to the Zoning Appeals Board to fill the unexpired term of Commissioner David Sanders. That term would expire January 2028. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Rolls Walter makes that motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Eldridge, seconds it. Any discussion? No, we didn't have anybody that you got to sign up in our office. So you're right, I did not call that to your attention, I didn't, but we didn't have. So my apologies. Pardon. Approval of the minutes. Anthony, that's your job usually, to call my attention to that. I'll back up to it after because we got a motion on the floor that's been properly seconded. But I'm not above mistakes. It's just, I appreciate y'all calling to my attention. Because you know I will call it to y'all's attention too. Okay, any discussion about James Jim Hammond going to the Board of Zoning Appeals? All in favor of approval of that, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Now let's back up. The minutes for the August 15th meeting. One thing to call to your attention in there, we didn't, we'll mark that out. You did not get the financials last month, and you do not have them this month. But as soon as we finish out the year, you will get the end of the year financials, and those will be up to date. So I would entertain a motion with that note of that we'll correct that, that you did not receive the financials in July. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Guntherberg seconds it. Commissioner Mitchell, I'll make sure you get your name in the minutes. Any questions? Okay. All in favor of approval of those with that no, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item. Consideration of approval to appoint Waylon Young to the Zoning Appeals Board to fill the unexpired term of Jenny Rolls Walter. That term expires January 2026. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Mitchell, you second that. Any questions on that? We did fill, last month, we filled the one that Commissioner Frazren, where he was replaced by Tony Colwell. So that clears us, our attention was brought to that by our attorney, that it was inappropriate that Commissioners serve on that. So with approval of Waylon Young, that clears us up on that. All in favor of that approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. The next item. Consideration for approval to appoint Bonnie Colwell to the Financial Management Committee to fill the unexpired term of Ben Brown. That term expires September 26. Now Bonnie was the only one who requested to be put on that committee, but someone else could be nominated from the floor if you see fit. Otherwise, what's the will of the Commission on this item? For Bonnie Colwell to fill that position, do I have a second? Commissioner Spray seconds it. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Nix? Okay. We have one abstention. Commissioner Nix? Oh, Commissioner Douglas abstains. Anybody else want to abstain? Alrighty. All in favor of Commissioner Colwell to be appointed to that position, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved with two abstentions. Okay. Next item. Consideration for reappointing Ernie Morgan, Tommy Sanders, Brian Ruddledge, and Daniel Johnson as the Judicial Commissioners. Terms expire September 2026. They've agreed, and Judge Murray asks that they be approved. Okay, Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Commissioner Spray, seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval of those, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Next item. Consideration to reappoint Randy DeLaup, Betty Creeson, Brendan Rolls to the Three Star Housing Committee. That term, those terms expire September 2026. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Okay, Commissioner Nix makes a motion for approval. Seconded by Commissioner Taylor. I will interject. Commissioner Rolls asked me, she said, "What do they do?" And kind of in a smart aleck response to it, I said, "Nothing." And that's, that was the actual truth. They do nothing. But it's one of those things, far as being a three-star committee, we have to just have it. So, but they really don't do anything. So there should be more committees like that. But what's the will of the Commission on this item then? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? Unanimously approved. Next item is consideration to reappoint Anthony Taylor, Jack Ashley, Pat Haynes, Danny Walker, and Dr. Theresa Morrison to the Lincoln County Ethics Committee. That term would expire September 2026. What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Rogers makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hunter, seconds. Any questions or comments? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. The next three items, I believe, are our Lincoln County Planner, Tracy Perkins. And I'll ask this. All three of these items are called for a public hearing prior to our September meeting. Does any objection that we take them all together after she reads those? Okay, we got a motion, everybody. All those in favor of agreement that we vote them all at one time, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Okay, we'll take them all three, so take off.
First file is File Number 2025-R4. This is a rezone on Wrightchurch Road, parcel number 126027.06. It is a total of 15 acres. They're going to rezone 12.98 acres to A2, and they're requesting a rezone 2.02, one acre to C1. So it's going to be two different zonings. You'll have maps in there for next month. I think they're in there as well this month. And that is Gabriella Kent and Brooks Henderson. The second one is File Number 2025-R5. This is 71 Morgan Circle in Petersburg, parcel number 013042.00. It's a rezone from A1 to C1. The owner applicant is Gerald Todd, and they are asking for this to be rezoned to C1 to continue the use that it is currently a truck repair center, and they wanted to add a used car auto dealership to the property. The third one is zoning amendment change, ZR 2025-3. This is a change for the timeframe allowed for the Planning Commission to submit its recommendation regarding any proposed zoning amendment change. Our, the zoning resolution reads 35 days right now, but TCA actually dictates 30 days max on that, so we're just trying to get that in line with TCA. And all three of these were recommended and approved by the Planning Commission on August 4.
What's the will of the Commission? Commissioner Rolls Walter makes a motion for a call for a public hearing on all three of those prior to our next month's September meeting at 5:30. Commissioner Guin, seconds that. Any questions on either of these three? All in favor of the call for a public hearing, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Eldridge, I heard that you're the substitute for Commissioner Cunningham on IDB. I thought you looked like you were dressed for it, so. I put on a tie tonight just because, you know, I thought Doug, you know, usually dresses appropriately for that kind of report, and I see you followed suit, so looking forward to your report.
That's right. Commissioner Cunningham is not, is feeling a little under the weather, so he asked me to present our IDB quarterly update. So the IDB continues to host bi-monthly plant manager and human resources directors meetings to discuss challenges and solutions with their peers. Ms. Middleton arranged a tour of Oak Ridge National Lab for our local plant managers and human resources directors for research and development partnerships available with local industries. Every year, the State of Tennessee's Department of Economic and Community Development determines all counties' tier levels based on unemployment per capita income, poverty levels, and those types of statistics. For the fiscal year 2526, Lincoln County will remain a Tier 2. Tier levels affect a company's job, tax credits, as well as the community's matching funds required for grants. Tier 2 requires a 30% match, but if the site has been received and has received a visit from Austin Consulting through the Select Tennessee Certified Sites Program, the community match will then be reduced by an additional 50%. So all of our IDB sites have been visited by the consultant, which makes our match requirement only 15%. So that's very positive. At the 2025 Annual Economic Development Seminar hosted by Middle Tennessee Industrial Development Association, our IDB staff learned about the future of global trade, federal policy updates, and how to assist our local industries navigating these impacts. The seminar also included a planning session for the upcoming 2026 Wage and Benefits Survey. You may remember since 2022, the IDB has really been working with the Tennessee Department of Human Services regarding a lack of childcare in our community. We need more childcare facilities according to the businesses that we're recruiting. So during this process, Ms. Middleton began working with the local, with the local business, trying to expand its business by adding a childcare facility. The Kid Magic Learning Center will be opening soon. The interest form is now open to sign up for updates, tours, and enrollment information, and this will make a great impact on increasing childcare availability in Lincoln County, and that's a positive for our industries. Construction of the community's seventh spec building is underway. This will better position the community in attracting industrial growth. IDB has exceeded expectations in planning, constructing, marketing, and selling spec buildings before construction completion. The previous six spec buildings have resulted in 1,100 new jobs and $150 million in capital investment in our community. IDB was recently awarded a $3.5 million grant to fund construction of a 100,800-square-foot spec building on the only remaining available industrial lot in Runway Center. Construction is expected to be completed by March of 2026. IDB has submitted a spec building for several projects, and interest in the property continues to increase. Elaine and Emmy Lou attended the 2025 Space and Missile Defense Symposium. They will able, they were able to meet with several companies to discuss the benefits of doing business in Lincoln County and with our partners at the State of Tennessee, TVA, and UT Space Institute. And finally, one that I'm sure you most, most of you have heard about, Tennessee Governor Bill Lee, Department of Economic and Community Development Commissioner Stuart C. McWhorter, and Build X Modular Tennessee LLC officials announced on August 6. The company is locating in Lincoln County, establishing off-site modular manufacturing and distribution operations under the Mod Max brand. Build X Modular will create 110 new jobs and invest $23.3 million in Fayetteville, Tennessee. This company is acquiring and retrofitting an existing modular manufacturing facility to expand its capacity for high-quality modular housing, serving large developers and commercial clients across the southern middle Tennessee region.
Good job, good job. Any questions? All right, thank you. Our next library board, Ms. Megan Murr.
Good evening. During the month of July, 3,150 patrons visited the library and checked out a total of 1,998 physical materials and 2,942 digital materials. We just finished our annual summer reading program. We had 195 persons register, and we hosted a total of 66 programs with 1,846 persons attending. Lastly, I would just like to say thank you to you all for your support in our project to replace our HVAC unit at the library, and just to give a brief update. We were hoping for the end of August for install, but unfortunately, we just learned that equipment is not set to ship until September the 9th. So just wanted to update you all that we are looking at end of September before we can get that project completed. We're doing our best to stay open day-to-day. Our system keeps breaking on us, and we keep fixing it, but we're, we're going to remain open as long as we can. And that's my report.
Any questions? Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bryant, I believe we're ready for the Budget Committee report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee, pursuant to due notice, the EMA Office on August 5th, 2025, at 5:00 PM. All members present. There were no public comments. Item 1, County Mayor, 1/8, dead stock contract that's attached. Mayor Newman informed the committee that the dead, dead animal contract didn't come in until late, and there is no increase in the cost from last year. He provided a handout to the committee for review that covered the numbers, the number of pickups by category. Commissioner Hamrick requested this information be emailed. Ag extension Bruce Delman also spoke to the committee regarding the need for this service and the health risk which will be caused without it. We had a motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, passed 6 yes, 2 no, to recommend approval of the dead stock contract.
What's the will of the Commission on this item?
Move and concur.
Do I have a second? Commissioner Young, seconds. Any discussion? Commissioner Guin? Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. They don't, that's kind of a gimme. They don't charge us any extra for that. So it's just one of those that, far as the disposal of their off-all, that they're doing just kind of by the grace of the company. Any other questions? Okay, you want that to amend, amendment to the motion?
No, I, no.
Okay, just a suggestion.
Just come back moving forward. I think every opportunity we get to improve on processes that we have, that's exactly what we should be doing. When you look at that and the amount of people that use it versus the meeting the full intent, it needs to be looked at.
Okay. Not to belabor the point, okay. You think I'm a little lost on, on your, your suggestion? That lots of people are using it, or?
You just said a few minutes ago that they have no limit on the number of people that use it.
Okay, here's what it is. It's based on our.
The operation should be the purpose of that, and it's not a farming operation.
When they, when they originally set up the proportions that the 10 counties pay, it was based on cattle numbers, and that's, and Lincoln County had the most cows, and that's, we pay a little more than, than the other counties. Giles is real close to us, though. So I don't disagree with about discussing it because it's one of those, I think the Commission needs to be more informed on it at an earlier date than them signing, sending the contract the day before the new contract takes effect. So I do agree with that. So I will make sure the information's out there.
I also think the intent in which the company is establishing could be renewed to see if that intent is still the same.
Yeah, okay. All right, any other discussion or questions? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No.
No.
Okay, let's have a roll call on it then.
Brenton Coley, David Sanders, Danny Walker, Bonnie Colwell, Terry Lynn Rogers, Jack Ashley, Kate Guin, Mark Mitchell, Charles Hunter, Mary Ann Tackett, Steve Spray, Daniel Eldridge, Jason Nix, Anthony Taylor, Pat Haynes, Tori Young, Ricky Bryant, Glenn Douglas, Steve Guntherberg.
I don't like subsidizing private enterprise, so my vote is no.
Jason Hamrick, Jenny Rolls Walter.
Oh, okay.
Ben Brown?
This is on the dead stock pickup. A yes vote is for it to continue.
Have 19 yes, 3 no, and 2 absent.
Okay. Motion passes, and I will get the information out for you for way before it comes up in budget. Commissioner Bryant?
Item 2, Highway Superintendent Tim Gill. Highway Superintendent Gill requested a roll his unused obligations funds from fiscal year 2425 to be used in fiscal year 2526 per the following 131 budget amendment. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of the Highway Superintendent's request to roll his unused obligations from 2425 to 2526.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Hunter makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Guin, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item 3, Sheriff Tole Malone. MOU between the town of Petersburg and Lincoln County Sheriff's Department is attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Sanders, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the MOU between the town of Petersburg and Lincoln County Sheriff's Department.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Douglas, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Sheriff's Office Clothing Allowance, which was a 1-on-1 budget amendment. We had a motion by Commissioner Hamrick, seconded by Commissioner Spray, passed unanimously to recommend approval of the Sheriff's Office Clothing Allowance.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Mr. Taylor makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Hamrick, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Re-roofing the original portion of the jail that's attached. Sheriff Malone updated the committee on the scope of the work and explained that this project would take a great deal of planning by his staff, especially due to having to request from state a temporary declassification because he would have to move his inmate population around during the construction phases. This roof being replaced is the original roof when the jail was first constructed in 1990. We had a motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Taylor, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of option 1, of re-roofing the original portion of the jail.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Guntherberg, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Next item, EMA Director Doug Campbell. Needed a surplus air trailer, some air packs, and some bottles. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Spray, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of surplusing all items and selling the air trailer and putting the money in account number 10154310-718.
What's the will of the Commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion. Commissioner Hunter, seconds that. Any questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye. Any opposed? No. Unanimously approved. Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Item B, needed a motion to move $6,500 from one of Rich Campbell's lines to another. And we had a motion by Commissioner Colwell, seconded by Commissioner Spray, and passed unanimously to recommend approval of moving $6,500 between two of his pay lines.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Walker makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Guntherberg, seconded that. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
Commissioner Bryant left the meeting at this time. Next item, item 5. 5A is 1-on-1 general fund budget amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing. Passed 7 yes, 1 absent to recommend approval of the 1-on-1 general fund budget amendments.
What's the will of the commission on the 1-on-1 amendments?
Move concur.
Commissioner Bryant makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Taylor, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner?
B, 116 solid waste budget amendment, and that's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Ewing. Passed 7 yes, 1 absent to recommend approval of the 116 solid waste fund budget amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Taylor makes the motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Douglas, seconds. Any questions, comments, or discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
C, 131 highway fund budget amendments, they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Hambrick, seconded by Commissioner Sanders. Passed 7 yes, 1 absent to recommend approval of the 131 highway fund budget amendment.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Guin makes a motion for approval. Do I have a second? Commissioner Nick, seconds. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
D, 141 general purpose school fund budget amendments, and they're attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Taylor, seconded by Commissioner Spray. Passed 7 yes, 1 absent to recommend approval of the 141 general purpose school fund budget amendments.
What's the will of the commission on the 141 amendments? Motion to approve by Commissioner Douglas, and the second was where? Commissioner Coley, seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Commissioner Bryant?
E, financials, and that's information only. F, opioid resolution, it's attached. We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Colwell. Passed 7 yes, 1 absent to recommend approval of signing the opioid resolution.
What's the will of the commission on this item? Commissioner Spray makes a motion for approval. Commissioner Young, seconds. Any questions, comments, or discussion on this item? All in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Mr. Bryant?
Item 6A, there was discussion on a grant writer administrator. That's an information item. They had some folks over from Franklin County that met with them and talked about this, and that'll be something I'm sure will be forthcoming. Item B, Warrior Exhibit, Linda Williams, attached. Ms. Williams, representing the Warrior Exhibit, expressed that the nonprofit is possibly losing funding due to probable federal government cuts. Currently, their board is covering the cost of the employees. They recently purchased the building next door for future expansion, and these cuts are coming at a very bad time. Mayor Newman handed out copies of a letter his office sent to the United States House of Representatives, officials, and others regarding the Senior Community Service Employment Program. Had a motion by Commissioner Sanders, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and passed 7 yes, 1 absent to recommend approval of giving the Warrior Exhibit a one-time contribution of $5,000 contingent on the City of Fayetteville approving the same.
What's the will of the commission on this item?
Move concur.
Okay. Commissioner Bryant makes a motion. Commissioner Hunter, seconds. Any discussion? Commissioner Rose Walter is recognized.
Just wanted to say that every year we have nonprofits can come and ask for money, and we have a set amount that we usually give out. And it's got to the point where a lot of times it's just the same ones that get the same amount of money, so people are not coming and asking. And I support the Warrior Exhibit. I think it's a great thing and a good addition to the community. But we also have the VFW Post 2167, and we have 3 American Legions that also contribute and do a great deal for the community that never come and ask for any money. So I support the Warrior Exhibit, and I know that, you know, they do need money to continue with this service. I don't know if they've looked at cutting their hours or redoing days to try and, you know, problem solve and address the situation. But I think if we're going to give money to that exhibit, that we should also give some money to the 3 American Legions and the VFW to go towards the needs and outreach that they have as well. So I would say that we support that, but that we also give $500 each to the other veteran-based organizations that could also use help and support as well.
Okay. Are you wanting to make an amendment to the motion?
Correct.
Okay. Tell, so we can get it recorded. Okay. American Legion.
So we have.
Tell me the other.
VFW Post 2167. And then we have 3 American Legions. American Legion Post 42, American Legion Post 111, which is in Flintville, and American Legion Post 155, which is in Petersburg. So they're all serving different areas. They all have different outreach and different things that they're doing, and I'm sure that they could use the support as well. And they're not going to come and ask for it evidently, so.
Okay. Okay. Oh, the way, nothing in your amendment addresses that it must be approved by the city to correspond. Would you like that to be incorporated in it too?
We can do that. That will be fine. I would be acceptable to that.
Okay. We will vote now on the amendment that Commissioner Rose Walter wants to add to that motion. Everybody understands. The one that she calls out, was there five of them? Five additional for $500 each? Four, okay. Four additional. We're voting on an amendment to that. Four additional, $2,000 total, and it would be continued on if the city did the same thing. Everybody understand we're voting on the amendment, not the whole thing yet, okay? Oh?
Second.
Uh?
Do I have a second?
Okay. Do I have a second? Okay. Commissioner Guin, seconded it. Now, any discussion on the amendment that's been made and properly seconded? Does everybody understand it? Commissioner Bryant?
Just a little bit of discussion. I think these are worthy people and they're worthy causes. But this person came and asked, and through the proper channels. And I got no issues with those people coming and asking through the proper channels. But if they don't ask through the proper channels, then, you know, I simply have to vote no because we have a, we have a meeting for a reason. We have nonprofit hearings for a reason. And then the people who don't come at that time, like this one, have come afterwards and made an official request through the proper channels.
I understand and appreciate your sentiments, but to my original point, and I think most would have to concur when you look at who receives these monies. Every year, the nonprofits, it's consistently the same that receive and/or are denied. And a lot of people are just not privy that they can come and ask for these. So I think this will be an opportunity to sow into the community through these organizations and assist them with what their goals are as well. I think that they're most deserving. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Let's have a roll call vote on this. We're voting on the amendment to appropriate $500 each to four additional veterans organizations, and it would have to be matched and approved by the City of Fayetteville to do that. Everybody understand? Okay. Let's have a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Jenny Rose Walter.
Yes.
Jason Hambrick. Steve Guntherberg.
Yes.
Glenn Douglas.
Yes.
Ricky Bryant.
Yes.
Tori Young.
Yes.
Pat Haynes.
Yes.
Anthony Taylor.
Yes.
Jason Nix.
Yes.
Daniel Eldridge.
Yes.
Steve Spray.
Yes.
Mary Ann Tackett.
Yes.
Charles Hunter.
Yes.
Mark Mitchell.
Yes.
Kate Guin.
Yes.
Jack Ashley.
Yes.
Terry Lynn Rogers.
Yes.
Bonnie Colwell.
Yes.
Ben Brown.
Yes.
Danny Walker.
Yes.
David Sanders. Brandon Coley.
Yes.
Okay. I'm sorry. I cannot recognize that until we got to new business, so, sorry. Okay. Now we've got a motion that has been amended, and we will vote on it. Here's what the, the motion is for is approval for $5,000 to the Warrior Project and $500 to those four veterans organizations with, that the city matches all of those. So it's a total expenditure for the county of $7,000, and it has to be matched by the city for us, for us to spend that money. Does everybody understand what we're voting on? Any discussion on the amended motion that we're about to vote on? Commissioner Coley?
By combining the two, if the city says, hey, we're willing to do 5,000 more, but we're not doing the other 3,000.
We would have to, because the motion's been amended, it would, it would not match ours. It'd have to come back before us. If they, if they said we're doing the 5,000, that does not match what we're saying. So we would have to come back at an additional meeting to approve the 5,000 if, if, if the commission sees fit.
Everybody understand? We could, but that's not the way it was done. It was an amendment to the motion. Okay, let's roll call. Everybody understand what we're voting on?
Brandon Coley. David Sanders. Danny Walker.
Yes.
Ben Brown. Bonnie Colwell. Terry Lynn Rogers.
Yes.
Jack Ashley.
Yes.
Kate Guin.
Yes.
Mark Mitchell.
Yes.
Charles Hunter.
Yes.
Mary Ann Tackett.
Yes.
Steve Spray.
Yes.
Daniel Eldridge.
Yes.
Jason Nix.
Yes.
Anthony Taylor.
Yes.
Pat Haynes.
Yes.
Tori Young.
Yes.
Ricky Bryant.
Yes.
Glenn Douglas.
Yes.
Steve Guntherberg.
Yes.
Jason Hambrick.
Yes.
Jenny Rose Walter.
Yes.
Passed this. Commissioner Bryant?
We had a motion by Commissioner Spray, seconded by Commissioner Ewing, and it passed through adjourned. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. Madam Clerk, I believe we're ready for notary publics.
Paige Murphy by Commissioner Hunter. Heather Kirkland Johnson by Commissioner Hunter. Pat Fraley by Commissioner Cunningham. Sherry Eliff by Commissioner Guntherberg. Karisha Carruth by Commissioner Rose Walter. Matthew Erickson by Commissioner Young. Samantha Anderson by Commissioner Sanders. And Kyler D. King by Commissioner Cunningham.
Okay. Commissioner Brown, you have one to add to it? Any others? Entertaining a motion for that list to be approved. Commissioner Mitchell makes a motion. Do I have a second? Commissioner Rogers seconded it. Any discussion? All in favor of approval of the list of notary publics, please say aye. Any opposed, no? Unanimously approved. Floor is now open for new business. Commissioner Eldridge?
I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow night in this room, we're going to have the second Coordinating Committee, Public Hearing and Coordinating Committee meeting for our growth plan. You all will remember that we're in the process of amending that. And we had a great meeting last week. This will be the, the third night that we've done that. We had one on the 7th, one on the 14th, and this will be the 21st tomorrow night. I'm sorry, Thursday night. I don't know what day it is. The, this one, of course, it deals with the growth plan, and part of the statutory requirement is that each of the municipalities within the county have to have their own public hearings, and they have all done that. And so we are hopefully going to be on their agenda. We're scheduled to be on their next meeting. However, they, they will still have some discussion period on what they want to do with their urban growth area. It's a little uncertain. Well, I won't go in. I have a pretty good idea that, that Petersburg may pull back to their city limits. Ardmore probably will do the same. Fayetteville will probably reduce their urban growth area too. And what that will result in is then the county, we will discuss where we want to do planned growth areas. We've had some great input. This, this is an iterative process. So every time we meet, we, we get a better product. So I encourage everybody to come out Thursday night and give their input. Of course, this body will get a chance to review that well in advance, and you'll have final approval on it. But the thought process is now that once, that we're going to, it may be delayed by 30 to 60 more days in order to let, to wait on the cities to do what they're going to do, and then to allow another round of, of community input just to make sure everybody's, you know, sees the final draft that, that, that you're seeing too. So anyway, I encourage everybody to come out on Thursday. At 6:00 P.M., we have the Coordinating Committee Public Hearing, and at 6:30, we have the Coordinating Committee meeting.
And while you're, while you're on, Dan, go ahead, because we can't say it too much because it is confusing. Difference between growth plan and comprehensive.
Two different objectives there. They're very similar, and they're complementary, but they're very different. Our current growth plan, the growth plans are a requirement by the state of Tennessee. The last growth plan that we have was completed in the year 2000, so we are amending that to update our planned growth areas to allow the county to rezone as this body sees necessary. We are somewhat restricted in certain areas. The, the Planning Commission is anyway. And so this will allow the, this body here to, to, to project where we want to provide for potential future growth. It doesn't mean anything's being rezoned. It is protecting the property owners. It's protecting our agricultural and rural areas. And it will establish planned growth areas where we, this body sees fit to, for potential future growth, but it does not mandate it. So the comprehensive plan is, is a, it's a non-binding plan that goes a little bit further and talks about different areas, or different ways we may want to grow, different ideas and things like that. But this is a very narrow, a narrow document that, that makes that definition for us, the growth plan.
Any questions? Commissioner Guin?
When you say growth plan, is that the same as the urban plan?
As, as I think you're thinking of it, it is. The urban growth boundary was established, you know, in, in 2000. Cities had to define what their urban growth areas were. And so that resulted in the growth plan. Well, that has been dated now and is, needs updating. And so we, that's, that's what this is.